Yeah, nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, I'm gonna go ahead and call me nurse and start the ledger of meetings.
My allegiance to the light and the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. You got a whole room, it's nice to see you all. Next is approval of today's agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve today's agenda.
I will second that.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Carrie's next is approval of minutes of six ten twenty twenty four and six fourteen twenty twenty four.
Lance, I'd make a motion to approve the minutes from both June tenth twenty twenty four and June fourteenth twenty twenty four.
And I will second it.
It's been moved to seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 That's Carrie's. Next is approval of claims for payment.
Make a motion to approve the claims for payment for June seventeenth twenty twenty four.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? And then all, or say aye.
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 Bush carries, they can consider re- consideration to re- special class fee.
Lance, I make a motion to approve twelve month class fee retail license for Timbers Edge effective in June twenty twenty four expiration in nineteen twenty twenty five.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussions? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is consideration for the resignation of the A H National E R record.
I'll make a motion to approve the record.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
I know that was a data had an active review, like space to bore, how teams. Position on that connection and if anybody's interested, please try to judge that or or contact E M Larson or some of our process and we'll get them properly worked out by.
Any other comments? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is consideration of re- 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 McDonald's or the A H just don't drop down.
I'll make a motion to re- re- done done or go to the A H mission.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Appreciate it, Don, his long service. He was the the veteran board coordinator or pop office or for several years, so. Appreciate it. Again, again, he did a good recent question about what the position entails, your body, uh, what a winner. I hope to shed light on your state of serving in that vacation issue.
I talked to Don last week, he said he was more concerned again. Any other discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is consideration of do re- most say take change, changing the date time twenty twenty four regular work meeting from the table.
I'll make a motion to take taking changing the date time twenty twenty four regular work meetings from the table.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All right, here. Favor say aye.
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 Most carries now, it's on the, um, the end is consideration changing date time twenty four or 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 meetings, just to do some discussions. We had a little discussion last week, B J wasn't here obviously, you have a good much leisure, you're much like already like.
Um, I did, I did, I know, I, 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 I'm okay changing it, I just want to make sure that we're changing the right reason and we've looked a long time ago, not, it wasn't a long time ago, but about what weather day it is, has happened, reasons to choose. Monday, Monday, they, they might say seem to be there on common, um, so, uh, it, it doesn't really matter to me, but I, if we're trying to avoid dead ones and make sure that things are not on line, then I'm not sure changing the dates can change that. Maybe I also have to change, so, um, if, if you say Wednesday nine AM back to the old three twenty two days, uh, that's fine with me, but I would, I would hope that logic is that everything is done on time and fashion and then things on me. Because I don't, I don't think that there's, there's only significantly larger than us that have these on Sunday, I mean, I mean, all, all of the time. Things are bound to happen, I just don't know, Jane, 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 which is going to change here every year.
Well, I know, I do witness, um, and recently, especially in the morning, sometimes trying to get some stuff in that pack, it was changing, you know, on maybe Friday or something, most, most of the days, um. I, I think, I think part of that is due to people not getting their items on schedule, so I need to, and I want everybody. When there's a deadline set as far as when you get something, don't wait till an hour, two hours later or whatever, it makes, it makes Anne have to recycle everything. Reaching or, so it's, yep, yep, add it to the agenda, she's got some of that, I've seen the work that it takes, time, um, and the stress that it puts on her. So when there's a deadline, you need to make your deadline, so, um, so.
Ideally, I would like to see it change after a certain year when we have a regulation meeting, I'll put that up, but, uh, this, this alert board, three, three people, we, you know, talk to our other election officials, so if there's a need for immediate change, then I'd say there's a need for immediate change.
Well, I think listening to the department has lots of, you know, indicated it's hard for them to come up with that.
Right, right.
Um, so I know we don't have more here today, right? Um, I would, I would, I would prefer to change it, um. I don't know, Tuesday or Wednesday, I mean, never seen, well, well, we hadn't had it on Wednesday, so I don't know, have a reference.
And states, Mondays, Tuesdays, I have meetings on Tuesdays, I have meetings on Mondays, that I've been less new of them, but, um. Tuesdays, when I first started, it was immediately on Monday, they got, they got to Tuesdays, so Tuesdays, Tuesday, back in, back, back, back to Monday again, back to ten, ten years, but, um. So I, I, you'd be Monday, Monday, Wednesday, they'll have that creates problems with I S A S A every now and then.
But a lot of times on Wednesday, uh, uh, I say meetings, those are still, no, 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 Wednesdays. And that's, you know, there's, there's, there's holidays that happen on Monday, Monday's time, so we have to change our meeting then, so I S A S A what, a couple of time, time a year. Um, you know, it's changed the meeting then, then have to.
Thursday says right away, it's a word if anyone even had any afternoon. It doesn't get the other, the other submissions, I don't believe in how yours is.
Friday, Friday, Wednesday, 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 okay. Doesn't, doesn't mean any problems, just don't make any, anybody leave here and try to, try to call anybody already, already, but, but. If that, that gives you all week to get something published by X time on Thursday, that gives you a lot of time.
It's my, it's my preference, going back and saying, saying, the word, word, um, I don't, I don't have a process, was there, was there a night by the clock?
So we talked to you about, uh, what his schedule was during the image.
He doubles on Mondays, I know, I know, uh, yeah, yeah, we started that, when we switched Mondays, um, Wednesday, they never see her since, and you probably did it now, now.
Right.
Sure, sure. So maybe that worked better for him, too, no, I did talk to him, it's something that we should, we don't have very much to do. Uh, at any rate, I don't do anything, I think at least a lot of that.
Oh, you're gonna make it back to online, you know.
That's.
You, you're running nine, nine, every morning or ten?
Oh, I prefer to use ten, ten, that's terrible.
I have a question for Lane, publication wise, what, do you have any, how, how to, would a change in, in act? Your, your work.
Tuesday, it would be a long time, but, I mean, I'm, I'm, I, I.
Yeah, yeah, but Wednesday?
Oh, well, Wednesday, fine, fine.
Okay, okay. So.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to change that one day, um, to Wednesday, nine, nine AM, that July third, third.
I'll, I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? We take quite a bit. Any other discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is. Acknowledge receipt of auders. Report for a month of May.
Lance, I'd make a motion to. Approve the auders' report for the month of May.
I will second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next is acknowledge her in County Economic Development Marketing. Ben.
Thanks, you have less.
You can't.
I think I'll need that, but.
Okay.
Good morning, for those that don't know me, I'm Deb Coster with Hardin County Economic Development, I'm serving in an interim position with the county currently, and with me today, assisting me in this presentation is Laura Carr, Laura Carr used to be a past county employee working in conservation. She also serves as a board director for the River Zeds Trail and also is currently, um, operating her own business now. Under the business name Reveal Marketing.
Marketing Solutions, yep, yep, so I'd like to welcome her and assistant lead today, so.
Anyway, so when I came on board, one of the needs for the county, which was non-existent, is we had absolutely zero marketing, zero presence on the web that. We had an economic development department within the county, within Hardin County, so, um, realizing that's a need, realizing that's important because we live in a very competitive world in economic development, and when people. The, the search engine is, you know, our, our computers, and when we go reach out and we're looking for that business opportunity or that community to move to, or that job opportunity, where does everyone go? They go to the worldwide web, and if you're not there, you're missing out. It, you know, it's a click, one click and you're done, and believe me, we're competing with the entire world when, um, so we want to have a great web presence, and so I felt that was very important. Um, supervisors were on board when I talked about marketing being important part of the, the budget, and as we move forward, it is now, so I'm really excited about July one, it being a really an official. Line item, and, um, we can move forward with continuing to keep, um, different mechanisms, different platforms out there, and then also having a funding mechanism to do so. So anyway, I'll start, this is our website, it will be embedded into the Hardin County site, so once you click on the Hardin County government site, this site will actually be embedded. Uh, let's, you know, go ahead here, so, uh, yep, so this is kind of our homepage, opening page, talks a little bit about, um. Our organization. There you go, you can, kind of, just gives like an opening page. These are our, some of our resources, our small business, a lot of things you'll see there are either state or local programs where people can access those, so very quick links, which are important. To those entities that are searching, there's incentives, so here's an example, these are all of our incentives in Hardin County where we have revolving loan programs, Iowa Falls Area Development has one that talks about our grant program. We are home-based Iowa County, you're gonna hear more about that from Jeanette and I at a, at a future meeting here in a couple of weeks, we'll, um, hopefully have some more exciting news about that, that presence as well. But, and then you scroll on down, there's, um, some more information there about, uh. Other programs and such that, uh, within the state of Iowa and, um, the area that we offer, so. Uh, why don't you go back to that opening, that homepage, please? Would you scroll all the way down? There you go. One of, and I don't want to miss this, because the Hardin County Economic, or excuse me, the Hardin County Community Endowment Program is a reason why we're here today, because when I talked about funding a little bit. Without TAM and the foundation and that board, and they're giving this project wouldn't have been possible, they actually gave us five thousand dollars to launch this, this platform. So we're very grateful for TAM and her board of directors and, and all that serve in the, um, in the endowment board, um, they do. Many great things, and they're great partners and they're great resources, and I can't say enough positive things about that, so anyway, thank you TAM for that, yeah.
When you click on that little icon, does that bring up our?
Takes, takes it right to you, dear.
Thank you, I just want to see that.
Is I missed that?
Thank you.
That was, I talked about funding, so I wanted to go back there, so anyway, but, um, I won't bore you guys all with all the details, but, um, let's see, what, what are some of the really fun things, okay, go back to, um, maybe. Business, for example, um, available buildings. So you know, when we have a business looking at us, this, this program is, um, platform is linked to location one, so those are all the buildings in Hardin County that are available, so if you have a business that's looking for a warehouse. Um, looking for space, um, it's gonna take them directly to this, and it's gonna let them know what's available in Hardin County. So they could click on any building there that might meet their criteria, so. I guess what's important is, is that, you know, just one click or two clicks and people can get the information that they need, you know, it's always, we're all get frustrated when you go to a website and you're looking for things, or you're wanting things to be. Quick and at, at ease, and so just the ease in trying to, to find what you need, what might be your interest, maybe you're moving here, so. You know, living here, things to do, you know, whether it's housing, um, Laura, why don't you talk about this piece a little bit?
Yeah, so this was an article that we submitted to Central Iowa Tourism, um, they had a little competition for you to do twenty-four hours in your area, um, it was a free opportunity to market. Our Hardin County, um, so we submitted it and we were chosen, so we will be in their summer travel guide, um, highlighting things to do, um, I believe we focused. Eldora, Iowa Falls area, but we also featured a version of that article on the website, so. Um, just looking for those, those low hanging fruit that we can.
Yep, I think there's only twenty communities that were selected for, from the state of Iowa, and with Laura's submission, um, we were selected, so, um, Iowa Falls is actively using this piece as well as, as us, so, and then plus what, what the state's doing for us, so. That's just a great example of people collaborating and working together, you know, not only, you know, is this website directed towards. People moving here, people looking to expand their business, entrepreneurs and such, it's also quality of life and people looking to move and live here, because we all know that. Um, we definitely need workforce, we definitely need people to live in our communities, and as we highlight these types of things, you know, those are also the attributes that they're looking at to help them make that decision, so. Um, so communities, it's gonna, you know, if you want to click on that, it's gonna give all your communities in, in the county, so exactly, it's gonna take them right directly to the city of Eldora, for example, yep. Um. There again, I always relate, um, a website and working on these different platforms and stuff like milking cows, it's like never done, we're actively working on photographs right now, actively working on, uh, drone footage, some different things to, um. To bring into this platform with some, some new, new photo, photos and things like that, with all the projects that we have going on. So anyway, but really excited about what we're doing, um, really pleased, we work with Turner Marketing, um, Turner Marketing actually is also the same web-based, uh, business that Iowa Falls Area Development uses, so. Rather than us recreate the wheel, we, we partnered with an existing, um, firm that knew Hardin County well. And then one last thing that I want to highlight is our business directory, and I'm gonna let Laura talk about that project a little bit.
Yeah, so this is a project that I've been working on with Deb, and then also communities in Hardin County, um, Eldora Chamber, Iowa Falls Chamber to create. Um, it is a business resource directory, um, that is all web-based, so you can access it online, and then, um. It's, it's very highly linked, so you can go to accommodations, banking, and we have addresses, and if you click on the addresses, it will pull up Google Maps and like direct you straight to, um, the location. If you press on this, it will prompt you to call if you're on your phone, so easy access and then websites, um, and we are updating it on a quarterly basis, um, because. It's always changing, so, yeah, exactly, kind of like you said about the website, so, um, yeah, we have multiple communities excited for this launch, they've been really great help, and so, um. We're really hoping it serves, my husband and I have already used it before it even launched, like, okay, where do we want to go eat, and so, um, yeah, it's, it's just a, a resource for anyone traveling, but also people who are new to the community and maybe need to. Know where there's medical, um, grocery. They want to find a chiropractor.
One of the things that really drove this project is I had a very large project here in Hardin County that asked me for a directory, because they had a large number of employees that were going to be, um. Stationed here for a short time, so this resource guide can be printed, it can be linked into that business, so you know, if you have temporary construction workers, seasonal people, um. You know. All, everything that they need to know is included in this, so that they know where to stay, they know where to eat, they know where they can go cash a check. Um, you know, because they're temporary workers, or they're a remote worker, or something like that, you know, for a short period of time, um, but, um, and we have, you know, a lot of those type of, uh. Um, opportunities where we can share this information and just make that transition that goes back to coming into our community. It's just that much more easier, you know, for them to be able to conduct business, and, you know, we want to make a good impression, and so information is important and vital, so.
This is great.
Yeah, and actually, Iowa Falls Chamber is actually actively using this as well, correct, they're very excited about it, so they're using it just like we are, so, um, you know, that's. That's key, all of us working together, um, you know, keeping things fresh and new and, and having, um, you know, putting our first, our best foot forward all the time, so, any other questions?
When did this go live?
It went live today. So anyway, so watch for, you know, some more updates on photographs and some, we have some new platforms that are gonna be, um, launched here in the next couple of weeks, you're gonna hear about those, so we'll be back to the table here. Um, and, and let you know about those as well, so we're excited.
So Iowa Falls currently has this going on, right? If you link on Iowa Falls through our website, it'll pull up theirs.
So yeah, so under community, so you could, you could find Iowa Falls under the community. Is that what your question is? So you can get, find them, and then if you want to collect, uh, go back to the economic development. Resources, you'll be linked to that first page links all the. About here. No, that's all the communities, yeah, so if you clicked there, you can find out Iowa Falls, it's gonna take you to the city website. Then it, but, so your question then, going back then to the beginning there, Laura.
To your homepage?
Yeah, to the homepage, and then. Look down. Where's the, there. The area chambers of commerce and the other economic development arms that are within the county, is that what your question was, so if you click on Iowa Falls Area Development, that's gonna take you to Mark's site?
Okay, that's.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've also been working with Amanda with Greenbelt Home Care, um, we do have a resource guide there as well, so she's really excited and a partner in this as well, as we look at that guide as well, and perhaps, um. The platforms are gonna both move, hopefully, moving forward will be accessible, ha- kind of have the same look and feel, um, we're, I'm excited about adding QR codes and that sort of thing, just to make ease. Um, with users and travelers and such to, uh, just.
Tam, you had a question?
Well, that, that was my question, is to make sure that that resource guide.
Yes, so that's always, so we've already, we're already having those conversations with her, so yep, so yep, she's been in the loop.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So anyway.
Great.
That's us, so.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, Tam and your team.
Yeah.
Very good, very good, that looks great. Thank you, Laura.
You want to acknowledge? I'd make a motion to acknowledge the Hardin County Economic Development Marketing Website kickoff sponsored by Hardin County Endowment.
Aye.
Sound like a NASCAR.
That's right, that's right.
Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries. Next, I ever change the statuses.
You have a motion to approve the change of status for Brittany Schapper, um, it's a resignation as a correctional officer in the Sheriff's Department. Um, effective, it's like April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussions? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
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 Most carries.
And the next one is, I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Reed Schapper, um, it's a promotion to full, or from part-time to full-time, also as a correctional officer and the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Harry, none, all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Most carries, other business?
Unless, if anybody else has anything, I'll go, uh, I wanted to invite, uh, I think we can call each other friends and stuff, even though out of the gate, funny story, so, um. After I was first elected, Lance told me after the election that I was going to be part of, uh, some drainage litigation, and he couldn't tell me. What it was going to be about, he just said on January second, after I sworn in, he had two piles of paperwork for me, and so within a few days of. Uh, being sworn in, uh, I was in Des Moines, uh, I think it was Davis Brown Law Firm, and, uh. I met, uh, Joel Greer for the first time, it wasn't the exact meeting that I probably hoped for, but it wasn't a bad meeting, uh, but it wasn't something that. When you take the oath of office, you expect, hey, welcome to drainage litigation either.
Hit the ground running.
Yeah, so, uh, uh, I invited, uh, Joel Greer, uh, he's the mayor of Marshalltown, he's an avid trail enthusiast. And he has been instrumental in, uh, helping with the trail project in Marshalltown, Marshall County, and, uh. I read the Times Republican as well as a bunch of small Iowa newspapers and, and large newspapers on almost daily basis, and I've read about what, uh. Mayor Greer and his team in Marshall County have been doing for the trail project, and asked if he would join us to give us an update. And their perspective and how we can be better partners going forward, so, uh, with your permission, Lance, I'd like to, uh. If you have the Florida, yeah, have Joel come on in.
Sure.
Speak to us, and I appreciate your time this morning, Joel.
Thank you.
Not litigation next time, though.
Yeah. I'm getting out of that business.
Are you?
Yeah, at seventy-one, I fired State Farm, my biggest client over the years, and, uh, I've only got seven cases left, and I had a lesson, it's gonna be August the twenty-five, and then I'm gonna be a full-time grandpa, I think.
Congrats.
So I got a year and six months left as mayor, and I'm not running, yeah.
All their breaking news, maybe?
No, no, it's no news.
Okay.
They don't believe me because I said that the last time. I'm happy to be here, but I really just tickled, and this is such a big project, it's, it's, and last week was one of the most fun ones I've had in my lifetime, I'm not kidding, because we've got this, the Link Creek District. Uh, fundraiser that we have going on, that includes the trailhead and Martha Luntai Theater and a new bridge to connect the, uh, two trails in Marshalltown and that sort of thing. And then we've also got the, I, I don't know, this is being, uh, sent around and, and used as much, uh, up here as up, as down there, but, uh. We met the minimum goal, so we are now positioned well to go forward with the, uh, uh, Link Creek District, um. Carolhead Bridge and Martha Luntai Theater and the other things connected there, and we've also met the minimum bid to get the twelve million dollar grant application, and it was gonna be due today, but they. As of last Thursday, I found out that they've, uh, moved the deadline a little bit later, which isn't a problem, we were ready to, to hit send today, but, uh, we'll have a little more time to collect a little more information. We have not stopped, in fact, it's gotten me so excited that, that we had dinner last, uh, Friday night with two multimillionaires, they are on the trail, uh, a lot. I shouldn't, may identify who they are, I'd tell you, uh, much more about them, they're in their eighties, and they, they don't have any families, and so this is. Perfect for them to help fund the next phase, which is maintenance, and how do we keep this going, and, uh, on Saturday, I'll be picking up their daughter at the airport. She's married to a billionaire, uh, he's, he's one of those investment guys, uh, venture capitalist in California, I've never asked them. for money for anything. But when she was dating Jack Dorsey, the, the Twitter guy, I actually flew him in the airplane up here all the way to the Stevo Rock and back and had keep taking pictures. So it just might be an idea that if we ever got to the point where we were looking for the twenty million dollars, I'd be telling Jack, hey, Jack, you know, you, you can make part of a trial after, uh, girlfriend or wife, if the guys get married. Well, she dumped him, moved to New York. The guy who was the biggest investor in Twitter is now our son-in-law. We've got two grandbabies for and, 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 and two. So I, I'm taking this, this brochure with us this weekend. We're meeting in Okoboji. And I will be quietly, silently asking for an anonymous gift if they see that to do it. But they might not. And even if they do, having the ability to keep this trail going is, it's, it's just going to be phenomenal. Uh, it really is. Yeah, I'm a trial lawyer. I've been up here trying cases. You have an interesting thing if you're in the middle of the courtroom, the, the, the hyperbole, you heard what, what word is called? The sound comes back at you, so you kind of have to step away. Pretty comfortable up here. Yeah, the drainage district was not the most interesting litigation I've been involved in. Hit the ground running while so they hit the groundwater running. Uh, but what I've really done most of my life is metal and nonprofits. That's been, uh, we don't call, my wife and I, we turned the highest score ever turned in at a four ball eights and engulfed. And my insurance agent doesn't want me to do it because I hit people. That's if I give it off the tee. So what we do is I'm in the chair or volunteer director and president of twenty-two nonprofits. People see me coming down the street of Marsh Town, they cross the street because I know I'm looking for money. And so we fundraised, Turner and I were, were part of the cath lab, the two million dollar bill of our hospital. Uh, another gentleman and I, he was firefighter, Mar- and Marsh Town and I were the two that raised the two and a half million dollars going to the Iowa, um, what was called Iowa, busy in Iowa things to get the grant to build our county conservation commission office at Grimes Farm. Uh, our Y is, is pretty nice nowadays. Uh, we got to do hospice on that committee. So people really want to avoid me. But in, in our calcium, we have veterans calcium, but all of those things are economic development drivers. They are things that make people proud of living in the town where they are. And this trail is going to connect us to a whole bunch of cities that will become like the Root River Trail. But, uh, you know, if you guys are bicyclists and they've done that one, you know what those towns have become. Uh, there's, it's like, no, they're new places. Say, new places to eat, good places to drink. Um, uh, we, we've been up to Decorah, their new trail, you might need an e-bike to get up some of those hills up there, but that's having that effect down there. Um, Andrea Bolton, does she come up here as much as she comes to Marshalltown? She is the person who does the director for all of the state for the trails in Iowa. She has gone on record as saying, we are going to have the next I Ruber Trail. The, the, I'm, the, we're going to have the next, I'm sorry, the High Trestle Trail. Because it will be such an attraction here. Now, I mean, I'll bet a few of you have been to the High Trestle Trail. It gets a lot of, gets a lot of publicity. And all of the towns along it have had a real injection of money and interest and, you know, they're, they're way more likely to grow than some of these small town county seats. My hometown is Spencer and some of these others that, uh, are struggling to keep courthouses open and, and, uh, and keep their schools there. Well, the way to do it is to have people want to where they want to live. That's how we work anymore. You know, you can work remotely from anywhere, you know, from a lot of jobs. Uh, it's, it's having the quality of life things that will get people, uh, excited about, about living there. Uh, there's another connection that's, that's pretty cool. Now there's the, uh, veterans connection, uh, in, right past Albion on the way here, I didn't stop in to look at the park that, uh, the, uh, uh, the folks that have been r- running the major employer down there put together, uh, joy. Sorry. Uh, drawing a blank on, on what they call the park. But they have turned Albion into a destination place and it's a trailhead that's just absolutely wonderful. And it's all to honor the veterans. Well, we have Iowa Veterans Home, we're building a new veterans clinic that's going to open up in just a couple of months. We've got the Freedom Rock Trail. The trail dead ends now at the Freedom Rock. Well, it, 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 it ends up at the Freedom Rock. We're, we're ending up with spurs to go different places. Uh, the, the Colosseum has been rebuilt and it's, that was a three million dollar deal. It's just wonderful. It's a wonderful meeting place. We've become a home base, uh, county for veterans. So, uh, we have a very active group that is working to recruit more veterans that are retired or want to work longer and move here. And we're going to make this the, the showcase for veterans. And you get an e-bike, um, Dr. Grayther, the Wolf Clinic, wanted to donate ten e-bikes to the veterans so they could get on the trails. It's, it's that kind of thing that we have going there. Last week I had an exciting meeting because I got a call, I got an email about a month ago from Iowa State University saying we'd like to pick you as one of six mayors in the state to work on trail development. And they will dedicate now a whole bunch of staff in the landscape, uh, design, uh, department over there to come over and help us. And, and the problem we had was we already got this trail going. So it's like, well, what else can we do? The what else is, uh, we've got a, a seventy-five percent semicircle in Marsh Town right now. We could connect the, the other twenty-five percent to go through, uh, where we're up at Riverside Park at the north end of Highway fourteen. Go along the Dyke where Carl Chevrolet just put in a twenty million dollar deal. Uh, go along the top, the, the north side of Riverside Cemetery, which is one of the prettiest in the state, and actually one of the prettiest in the country. And connect, we, we need one more bridge to get back over to the north side of Iowa Veterans Home, which employs Southern people and that's, and some residents. Yeah, that's one of the prettiest areas in Marsh Town. So we've got that going. Also, we got a little place called Sam Lake about, uh, half a mile from our, our current trail. That one's going to be an easy pave. And then we'd like to get Timmons Road connected to this trail. Ultimately, as you guys probably know, there are two trails. I thought there was just one. I just learned recently there are two trails that go east, west, across the country. They intersect in Marshalltown. And so think about the tourism that is going to come in here and the people that are going to get on, get their bikes on their backs of their cars. Some, the driver, I've done that, hell, I, I took the, my bike in my airplane and flew to Rapid City. And then the trail one day north, then the trail one day south. Our Dow Ranch University Missouri, the Katy Trail down there is one of those. It's a big economic driver. People love it. This is going to be one of those that they're crossing the Iowa River nineteen times and, and a couple of the bridges are really pretty keen. One up in Stevo and the one that we get to keep is, is, uh, uh, between the Albion and, and, uh, Marsh Town. It was just exciting stuff. Uh, why should you do it? Um, if you don't, people will wonder why not? And in Marshalltown, we had that odd experience. You guys embraced the gift from the Almanet Charity Foundation. Thank you. For giving that to us. We'll take it as a county and, and you've got a great board and you've been working on this since then. In Marshall County, they said, no, thanks. And, and so what happened was, well, it had to be owned by a county or a municipality. And I had about three weeks to figure out, can the city of Marshalltown take title to it so we don't lose this one and a half million dollar railroad bid gift? And, and so I called the, uh, there's a lady, you might know the name Garst. I called Mrs. Garst because I found out that she in Breda, Iowa, had taken title to a trail that didn't even connect to Breda, but was in Carroll County and she knew that was going to be a big deal for them to have that, that trail. And she convinced me, yeah, you can do it. Just give it, give it a shot. So I, I was the one that incorporated the Trails Inc. I got twenty-two people. I asked twenty-two people to be on the board. Twenty-one said, hell yes. We got, we got that rolling. We started, got the money coming in. We hit four million dollars as of the, the, a year ago. Uh, to try to get this thing off the ground. And in the meantime, the supervisors down there just, uh, twice we approached them for money. And twice they said, hell no, uh, not going to do it. And you guys probably intersect with the current supervisors, the former supervisors, and you know, we have two new ones. They're conservative Republicans, but uh, the, I, they got elected in part because they embrace the idea, yeah, something like this helps the county. It helps the population, helps the tax base. It's a good idea. And so they just donated two million dollars. I mean, we could get twenty thousand. We were asking for twenty thousand at one time. I went back to the city and I asked, the deal I made with the city was we would never require the city to make any payments. And, and they never did, but we were missing out on these big grants because we couldn't put on a form that the city had donated and the county had donated. And I know we have missed some grants because the county didn't donate. Uh, the, the grant that we're going to turn in today, uh, by God, that came in pretty, pretty damn big, you know, it's really exciting. Um, what else can we tell you? And I should probably take the, I, oh, it's my favorite joke. Um, our school superintendent told us a long time ago. And this, this guy, it was, I was drinking too much. His wife told me, you just got to stop that. It, it's good to be a problem. Don't do this anymore. He promised he wouldn't. And, well, one, one day he wanted to get onto the, uh, corner store and pick up the newspaper and well, there's, he ran into a friend and friend says, hey, listen, I've been drinking a bar a lot, just one. But you know what happened? He ended up having a whole bunch of drinks and he comes home and he takes his shoes off and he's quietly trying to go in the front hall, trips over something, falls out of space like that. Light comes on and the mic's there with the, fully good, just what they had to say for yourself, Buster. And he said, I, I think, hell, this once with my prepared remarks and uh, take questions from the floor.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come up today, Joel.
Pleasure. It's, it's my favorite fundraising project in my life, I think.
Were there any other business? Public comments?
Here, Mona, do you have something to say? Oh, yeah. Mine won't be as eloquent or as long. But first of all, I want to thank the board of supervisors for, um, their past, uh, support of the trail. Even what we accomplished last year or finished in twenty-two with the, um, five mile um, construction, it was just, I think it was a catalyst for what's going on today. Um, we're seeing, uh, our last count, uh, I think our counter showed fourteen thousand users on the trail. And that, uh, each one of those, those users brings dollars from outside of this community and into it. And so that is what's go, I think is, is one of the, the major draws for our trail, um. And I agree with Joel. It, it's one of the most beautiful corridors. Nothing to take away from the Root River. But I think what we have going on here is just spectacular. It's, it changes, it's got canopyed areas, it's got open areas. And, um, I think it's just very unique, far more unique really, other than, you know, on the High Trestle, they have the, the gorgeous bridge. But the rest of the trail, there's not, you know, not a lot of variance, which, which we have, which draws people. Because when you're, when you're on a recreational trail and you're doing like, um, you know, like the Katy Trail is basically all canopy and and we have just, um, different vistas, different views that show off our county. And I think it's just, um, I think it's really prudent of us to, to try to share this with the rest of the, of the state and um, I'm just overwhelmed by the comments from people when they do ride the trail about how beautiful it is. So we really need to embrace that and um, I just would, you know, ask for your support going forward and, um, if there's questions that we can answer, just reach out to the board and, and we'll do our best to answer those.
Thank you. Yeah, your public comment?
Please kind of make a, a, a comment. So, uh, incoming weeks, um, I, I do plan on bringing something to the board to financially support this project. Uh, by June thirtieth, we have to have our American Recovery Dollars allocated. Otherwise they're going to go back. I don't know what that means.
December.
I thought we had to have them.
December two thousand twenty-four, spent by December two thousand.
So they moved the deadline, so I thought we had to have them allocated.
Nope, we got to the end of the year.
Okay. New year.
Okay. So anyway, sooner than later, I'd like to bring something to the table to, uh, spend down those funds to support this project. And, uh, a few years ago, we sold, uh, our county farm. And we have, I think responsibly invested the proceeds from that. And I believe that using some of the interest for the greater good, uh, will help us bring in economic development that we may not see otherwise. Uh, I think the times of, uh, bringing an industry that's going to employ a hundred people on three shifts to Hardin County is going to be tough. We don't have the housing or infrastructure for those things. But we do have Rock and Row. We have, uh, our Airbnbs, we have our hotels, we have our state campgrounds, we have our convenience stores. We have our pizza places. We have our, uh, we're going to have a new, uh, steak and golf place in Iowa Falls that need that economic injection. And I think this is a means of doing that if, if nothing else. Um, and so I want to work collaboratively. Um, and like Joel said, uh, it doesn't economic development isn't a partisan issue. Yeah, we want to be fiscally responsible. But realistically, what other mechanisms does Gifford, Iowa have in economic development? But there's somebody sitting on a property, they're waiting to open up something to be able to serve food and drink. Those are, those are sales tax receipts. There's people in union waiting. Now, the only down part that I feel about the trail is I like having my own wild berry and mushroom spots on the trail right now that in that undeveloped area that I have. But, uh, I'm willing to compromise and give some of that up to make sure the people of Iowa and hopefully the country come in and experience what I have in my backyard. Um, the last thing I would say is it's been brought to my attention that the city of Lescum, population two hundred ninety-six, were able to contribute ten thousand dollars. That comes out to almost, and that's a one, one-year gift. That comes out to almost thirty-five dollars per capita for the city of Lescum. So, um, I'm not sure what they have to gain. If the city is going to put a pop machine out, if they're going to put a bike repair station and charge for using the air pump, I don't know what they have to gain except by letting people see what the city of Lescum looks like. So I, I'm excited about this. You can tell I'm, I'm not a big biker. I like being outdoors though. And maybe, uh, this will give other people an opportunity to see the outdoors that I like and that I, it, it's my backyard. So my backyard is pretty awesome. So that's all I have, Lance.
Okay. Any other business? We're in public comments.
Yeah, did you probably anything else? Just reiterate everything that's been said this morning. Um, I think I looked back on the economic impact of the past couple of years of Marshall and Hardin County being, um, currently that economic impact number is about seventy-five million. And I think with this trail, that you will probably see a forty to fifty percent increase just because of the development of the bike trail. So the, I can't think of any other industry, like BJ said, we, we might not attract that manufacturing facility. But if you could, you know, double that seventy-five million to a hundred and fifty million dollar economic impact, that's going to mean every time a cash register rings, that's more local option sales tax. That helps your library. That helps your, build a sidewalk for all these communities and any small business up and down the corridor that's a young entrepreneur wanting to start here. Those are incentives that just can't be replicated for every dime that's spent, the the impact is huge. And, um, we have more and more Airbnbs coming online all the time, just like BJ said, there's people waiting to open businesses. Um, recently we've had, planning and zoning has been busy approving cabins, park, you know, campgrounds. Um, you know, this type of business is, like I say, it's really exciting having these entrepreneurs and these people coming to here to spend their money and, and, and inject, you know, more development. So I, I'm truly excited about it. Um, I can't say enough positive things. I want to thank everyone for being so generous in the fundraising. Um, it has been a very exciting project and, uh, we're not quite there yet. Like I say, Hardin County is really pushing hard. We're we're working those numbers, um. But yeah, it's been, I guess too, like Joel said, um, worked in economic development my whole lifetime, but I think that this probably has to be the most passionate and the most favorite project ever that I've worked on and serving with the board and, and the community's been just awesome.
Can I ask you a question, Dem? So, um, when I donate to Iowa Public Television and I give my twelve dollars a month, and let's just say that And let's just say that I fail to give my twelve dollars a month. What happens if somebody pledges and it's, they can't meet that obligation, let's just say, you know, life happens, so what what's the plan here in Harden County?
Right, well, the plan here in Harden County is that we have sought out a letter of credit with a local financial. Entity here in the community and they have agreed to move forward with a a letter of credit for us for those pledges, so. Um, historically, I've worked on a number of projects that have included pledges. Uh, in the area and um and and with this individual and this particular financial institution, um. We've never seen a pledge fail, I that we, you know, that um. It's always been, you know, ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent. Collection and um we're we're just very grateful that we have a local financial institution that um is a huge supporter of the trail system. And um, not only that, but is is very vested in the community, in the area, in the county. And they've offered their letter of credit, so that's, you know, a pretty typical. Type of approach that we have, whether we're building a swimming pool. Childcare facilities, those type of things, it just historically in my past that involved a a pledge. That they guarantee it, so that's pretty awesome.
Perfect, thank you, Deb.
Anything else?
I just wanna say, I mean, I'm not seeing a lot because I am on the trail board, so I think everybody would. Realize that I'm definitely in support of the trail. Um, and I agree with everything that's been said by Joel and Deb as far as what this is gonna bring to our county. And the more that we can bring tourism in and the revenues that we can, that can be generated off of that. Um, hopefully it brings more to our county and it will lessen the tax burden for 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 everybody and. Um, eventually and give us more more uh valuation growth and so forth.
It's it's, can I speak again to, it's my pride, really. Uh, and we finally moved into our garden house after the tornado, oddly enough, I got a phone call and yours came through here and the. The the client who was talking to me was a pilot who'd had an airplane crash, you probably know him by by identifying that, no, no litigation was. Was needed, but he had to stop the phone call because the windows in his home were were. Uh, crashing and breaking out, you had the same thing happen to your courthouse. Coming here, uh, the way this courthouse entrance is now compared to what was fifteen, twenty years ago. It was gonna, and all the judges come in, it's different place, they don't like going to tame a county, it just sucks, it just. And and this one was a little bit like that, it needed a facelift and and now we have two of the two of the nicest courthouses in the state. Uh, it's just cool and it's, I I'm sure you guys have lived here, you kind of people that come down from Iowa Falls and around the county, farmers coming. Pay their taxes or whatever, feel pretty damn good about the way this building looks, so we're we're trying to build that down in Marsh Town. You're building it up here, but I I forgot to mention two, two things that I have, one's in the newspapers today. Dylan Dos is our tourism director. And and uh Dr. Marsh Town uh area chamber covers, he just got the the statewide award for the Rising Star for Tourism. And we just, and Bolton Amink, who is our main uh architect and and team that's helping us do the design here. They got uh the top state award for their plan for our water plaza, which is gonna be attracting people downtown, so. You know, what started this phone call from the Unnatural Heritage Foundation, got a trail and they're, you know, on it, has become one veil of a deal. In this county and down there, you guys had more. More of the uh, more of the trail that we do down there, but it's all gonna be connected, I'll show it.
So you're saying Marsh Town is more than Zenas and the Mayfair, right?
My sister takes lemon from Ames every week.
Mix in subsidy on to the wild Brian.
Uh, subsidy is the the obligatory stuff, kids always have to go to Tiger Johns and then we eat every Sunday night at Ocean City.
Yeah.
So with that, I'm gonna ask, thank you, I'm gonna ask for a German.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded any discussion? Here and done all favors say aye. Motion carries for a German, thank you.